Welcome to the seventh hearing for submissions on the proposed Napier City District Plan, Hearing Stream Seven. Today, we are hearing submissions on the general and light industrial zones, the GMO provisions, and a few outstanding designations that haven't been addressed to date. Unfortunately, one of our hearing panel members is recuperating at home and he's attending digitally. I can see him in front of me. And I have to recuse myself for the first submitter, Hawks Bay Protein Limited. And Commissioner Van Voorthuisen will take over at that point if I resume for the next submission. We have a fairly short schedule today, but still some important issues to address. We should be finished by about 10:00, 10:30 for morning tea. So, thank you very much. So, I think, Ms Hemmings, we are to hear from you in your opening summary statements for the two industrial zones. So, welcome.
Perfect. Tena Koto, my name is Brooke Hemmings. I'm going to start with the general industrial zone and then I'll move into the light industrial. And I'm the author of the General Industrial Zone Section 42A Report. I am employed as a graduate policy planner within Napier City Council's City Development Team. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Social Science in Political Science, Education and Public Policy. I have been involved in the proposed district plan since January of 2024. And while I've prepared the Section 42A report for matters relating to the general industrial zone, I was not involved in drafting the proposed district plan chapter or the Section 32 report. I have read the submitter evidence in relation to the general industrial zone chapter, and I'm happy to take questions at the end of my statement. The general industrial zone identifies the areas where industrial activities can locate, operate and expand, provided infrastructure is available or can be provided to deal with the effects associated with discharges and the effects of industrial development on the environment and surrounding land uses are managed. Industrial zones are also primarily located close to key transport links. The general industrial zone provides for industrial activities that are not compatible with residential or other similarly sensitive uses and typically require relative isolation from other non-industrial land uses. Incompatible activities need to be managed to address the potential for reverse sensitivity or nuanced effects, potentially restricting the operation of industrial activities. There are four main industrial areas in Napier. This is Ahuriri, Onikawa, Awatoto and Pandora. The provision of infrastructure and its capacity influence the types of industrial activities that can establish in each area. In terms of matters raised, there were approximately 173 submission points, including further submission points on the general industrial zone. The matters raised have been grouped into key themes in the Section 42A report. A number of submissions relate to matters where similar, where the same or similar relief has been sought across the plan, such as railway corridor set packs, relocated buildings, the provisions of certain activities such as education activities, service stations and emergency service facilities. Other submissions are more specific to the general industrial zone, and this includes matters such as impervious surface area, reverse sensitivity concerns, stormwater management, heavy and wet industry concerns, storage of shipping containers and large format retail concerns. In terms of response to pre-circulated expert evidence, pre-circulated submitter evidence and statements have been received from a number of submitters. I have read this evidence and am prepared to respond to any matters or questions raised in relation to the information provided. For remaining matters of contention, submitter evidence has presented a compelling case, and I look forward to the opportunity to further consider my relief sought through the hearing today. Any change in my recommendation will be provided in the officer reply report. Hawks Bay Protein Limited raised the issue of reference to GIZ R8 within Rule 1, and I agree with the evidence and agree that this reference does not make sense and the reference should be therefore removed. They consider that changes are required to Policy 6 within the chapter to avoid confusion and suggest rewording the policy. While I'm sympathetic to the concerns raised, I have already recommended changes to this policy as a result of the questions raised by the panel. I will address this matter further within my reply report after hearing from the submitter. Hawks Bay Protein Limited raised concerns regarding objective wording, wet industry requirements and sought changes to Rule 1. I acknowledge the evidence in relation to these matters and wish to hear from the submitters before making further recommendations on the matters. The Napier Port has provided evidence in regard to container storage sites that they own within the general industrial zone and the railway line used by port operators to transport containers from the port that traverses the zone. They raise concerns about the district plan managing discharges that are managed through HBRC. And while I've read this evidence, I'd like to withhold recommendations until I've heard from the submitter. The submitter raises concerns that Condition B and C of Rule 6 lack clarity. I have recommended changes to this rule in response to the questions from the hearing panel and therefore reserve any further recommendations until after hearing from the submitters on the matter. Ravensdown are broadly supportive of the Section 42A report recommendations on the general industrial zone, but are pursuing amendments to two provisions, Policy 2 and Rule 1. Specifically, they want Policy 2 amended to recognise that appropriate services for heavy or wet industrial activities may be provided either through council, infrastructure or standalone systems, such as those used at their Napier Works. They also seek that Rule 1 be amended so that a permitted activity status applies to existing heavy industrial activities that discharge via consented or permitted standalone systems, rather than requiring all discharges to connect to councils' reticulated networks. I'm open to making further changes to these provisions where they better achieve the outcomes sought and deliver efficient resource management outcomes. I look forward to hearing from the submitters and having the opportunity to further consider this relief sought. The Heavy Hallage Association have provided evidence that they are largely in support of the new relocation of buildings rule within the general industrial zone. However, they seek amendments to the wording of the rule. I've reviewed this evidence and I agree with it, and this will be reflected within my reply report. There have been a number of matters raised by the panel in advance of the hearing, and I've provided answers to these questions in a document published on the 11th of July. Any further changes to my recommendations based on matters raised will clearly be outlined within my reply report for the chapter. Submissions on the general industrial zone did raise a number of matters of contention. As previously outlined, the matters I consider still to be outstanding are stormwater management, heavy and wet industry concerns and the storage of shipping containers. Happy to take questions on this one and then move to light?
Yes, if you don't mind answering a couple of questions. Firstly, from me, the ports submission. Is there any further guidance? Because I've read the evidence from the planning expert for the port. Is there any additional information you're looking for from that evidence in terms of the issues around managing discharges?
Do you mind if I just quickly bring that up?
Yeah, sure. I think this is just to assist her in what she might say later this morning.
Sorry, there's nothing that I can think of off my head right now in terms of specifics of what I want to hear from them. I just would like them to further go over the evidence.
Thank you. And in response to questions from the panel, you've addressed the issue about containers. And as we pointed out, the issue about excluding delivery by road and rail is problematic. So, your concern is really the sort of onsite movement and cleaning and storage of containers and not the initial deposition, if that's the right word, and removal of those containers? Is it clear enough about how that occurs? I mean, do containers just get put onto a site and then later on they're sort of all moved around like Lego pieces or something? And that's what you're concerned about in terms of noise and?
Yes, that's from my understanding, that's what I'm concerned about in that context.
Any questions from the panel? Commissioner Brosnan?
No, I think it's really clear you covered off the questions that the panel had, and I was particularly interested in the submissions around the setback. And so I think you've come probably to a good position on that. Yeah, no, I'm pretty comfortable.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
No, no questions from me, thank you Chair, and sorry about my IT issues.
That's all right. Long as you can hear. Thank you. We'll move on to the light industrial zone.
I won't bother reintroducing myself. I'll jump straight into the topic if that's all right.
Yes, certainly.
So, the light industrial zone applies to single or small clusters of industrial activity in general that are in close proximity to residential areas. The light industrial zone provides for a range of industrial activities and associated commercial activities that only generate adverse effects at a level that is compatible with neighbouring residential zones. Matters raised in submissions, there were approximately 74 submission points, including further submission points on the light industrial zone. The matters raised have been grouped into key themes in the Section 42A report. A number of submissions relate to matters where the same or similar relief has been sought across the plan, such as railway corridor set pack, relocated buildings, the provision of certain activities such as education activities, service stations and emergency service facilities. Other submissions more specific to the light industrial zone include matters such as building height and pervious surface area, reverse sensitivity concerns, stormwater management, trade suppliers and the definition of light industrial zones, as well as large format retail concerns. In terms of response to pre-circulated expert evidence, pre-circulated submitter evidence and statements have been received from a number of submitters, and I've read this evidence and am prepared to respond to any questions or matters raised in relation to the information provided. For remaining matters of contention, submitter evidence has presented a compelling case, and I look forward to the opportunity to further consider the relief sought through the hearing today. And any change in my recommendation will be provided in my officer's reply report. I note that Arapotama supports the intent of the recommended changes, but request a word and clarification from community correction facilities in Light Industrial Zone Rule 4B to community correction activities. I support that refinement and will include this within my reply report. Ravensdown have raised concern that some of their submission points are yet to be addressed. I note that any submission points in this hearing will be considered, sorry, submission points in this hearing will be considered through the wrap-up report in relation to their submission supporting the definition of industrial activity. I've accepted a similar relief sought from the fuel companies and am happy to confirm the acceptance of Ravensdown's submission also. The New Zealand Heavy Hallage Association have provided evidence that they are largely in support of the new relocation of buildings rule within the light industrial zone. They do, however, seek amendments to the wording of the rule. I've reviewed this evidence and agree with it, and this will be reflected within my reply report. There have been a number of matters raised by the panel in advance of the hearing, and I've provided answers to these questions in a document published on July 11th. Any further changes to my recommendations based on the matters raised will be clearly outlined within my reply report for the chapter. Key matters of contention in the light industrial zone chapter. Submissions on the light industrial zone raised a number of matters of contention. The matters that I still consider to be outstanding matters of contention are building height and pervious surface limits, service station and trade supplies as permitted activities and stormwater provisions. Thank you. Happy to have any questions on that one.
Thank you, Ms Hemmings. Just to cover off the issue of points that were allegedly not addressed in the Section 42A report from Ravensdown. And I'm just looking at their paragraph 4.7 where they list the two. Do you have any specific comments at this point on those issues and evaluation that might assist the hearing?
Sure thing, let me just bring up that paragraph. Sorry, just to clarify, we're looking at 3.2A?
I'm looking at page five of Ravensdown's written statement. They're not attending the hearing, but where they just raised the two submission points where they?
Oh, yes, I see. Yes, I think it was the submission number, the first one that they've raised it to, 46.18. I've accepted a very similar relief sought from the fuel company, so that one I'm happy to accept. In terms of any other submissions raised in here, we still have our wrap-up hearing to come. So, those ones would be addressed there.
Okay. Right, thank you. Any questions from the panel? Commissioner Brosnan?
Just in regards to that proposed five-metre mandatory setback, would that apply equally in the light industrial zone, including buildings under two stories?
Yes, that was the intention.
Yeah. So, I guess, just responding, I guess, to some of the submitters concerned. So, your stance is that that kind of one-size-fits-all mandatory buffer is appropriate?
Yes.
Do you see a space for kind of a performance-based or discretionary consent approach to allow exceptions where, say, KiwiWao assessment confirms negligible safety risks apply in those specific circumstances?
Not within these zones. I haven't, however, I think, oh, I can't really bring up other chapters. Yeah, sorry, do you mind if I get past?
I'm trying to put my head around how that could apply.
Sure. So, the five-metre setback is largely in response to the fact that the buildings within the light industrial zone and the industrial zone could be higher than what's in the general residential zone. So, that's a permitted allowance. Whether or not they actually build to that, you know, to that height, you know, that's a matter for the individual to do so. If they want to go any closer, then I guess that's a discretion, and so they would apply for a consent. And we would seek feedback from KiwiRail as to whether that's something that they would entertain in terms of the specific characteristics of that site or the railway corridor. So, the triggering of the consent gives us the ability to consider those matters.
Yeah, thank you. I think that pathway is what I was thinking should apply, so that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
No questions arising from the opening statement, but just returning to the Ravensdown tabled evidence. If you look at their paragraphs 4.14 and 4.15, particularly 4.15, addresses GIZ Rule 1, which is of concern to Hawks Bay Protein and the Port of Napier. I think they propose a reasonable solution there. So, I'd just like the officers to consider that in the reply report. And then just above that in 4.14, the same for GIZ P2. That changes Ravensdown's suggestion in greywash, so if that can be factored into the officer's considerations in reply, please.
Yep, most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Hemmings. We turn into genetically modified organisms, Ms Greg.
Morning, Nakoto. My name is Michelle Gregg, and my statement relates to the genetically modified organisms chapter, which I will refer to in my statement as the GMO chapter. I'm employed as a senior policy analyst in Napier City Council's City Development Team. My qualifications include a Master of Social Science in Geography and Demography. I have 20 years' experience working as a policy advisor in central and local government, and I've been involved in the proposed district plan since July last year. While I prepared the Section 42A report for the matters related to the GMO chapter, I was not involved in preparing the proposed plan. I've read the submitter evidence and statements in relation to the GMO chapter and am ready to respond to any queries about these from the panel. There is scope under the Resource Management Act for district plans to place additional controls on the use of GMOs, including field testing and outdoor release. The GMO chapter in the PDP adopts a precautionary approach to these issues, thereby seeking cross-boundary alignment for the management of GMOs with Hastings District. The aim of the proposed provisions is to promote regulatory efficiencies and support the export of high-value produce from Hawks Bay. Two submissions were received on the proposed GMO chapter, each raising one submission point, and no further submissions were received. The issues raised in the submissions are presented in my Section 42A report. Both submitters, Horticulture New Zealand and Mr Warren Pearce, support the precautionary approach to GMOs as proposed in the chapter. Horticulture New Zealand also supports the alignment with Hastings District Council's planning framework on this matter. No correspondence or pre-hearing meetings with submitters were held in relation to the chapter. No pre-circulated evidence relating to the GMO chapter was received, and the panel raised no questions in relation to my Section 42A report. There are no specific matters of contention with respect to the GMO chapter. However, as noted in my Section 42A report, the proposed gene technology bill, which is due about now for its second reading in Parliament, may have implications for the chapter once the bill becomes enacted, if that should happen. The purpose of that bill is to enable the safe use of gene technology and regulated organisms in New Zealand. The proposed bill aims to enable greater use of gene technologies in areas such as agriculture, healthcare and other industries, to provide, amongst other things, a more flexible legislative framework to accommodate future technological and policy developments. The proposed bill indicates an intention to establish a new regulatory regime for this purpose. So, if enacted in its proposed form, the bill would result in rules relating to GMO being removed from district plans across the country to ensure a nationally consistent approach to GMO management. But until such time, under the current regulatory framework, the policy approach in the GMO chapter of the district plan remains relevant. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. So, has there been any update on the bill, the status of the bill?
Yeah, I did check that this morning, and it's due to be reported back by the 31st of July. So, literally every day. But no update as yet this morning.
So, it's highly likely that we won't need to make recommendations on this because it'd be?
Yeah, I suspect it will go through, given the majority in the House.
Okay. All right, thanks for telling me. Any questions from Ms Greg?
No, not from me. I think we are way back national direction.
Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
Just in terms of this gene technology bill, Ms Greg, do you know that the provisions it has in it, would it mean that if, just due to timing, our decisions on the GMO chapter are promulgated prior to the bill becoming operative as an act? Does the act provide for those provisions to be removed automatically? Or would make the city have to go through a Schedule 1 process to remove them? I presume they'd just be automatically removed, do you know?
Yeah, my understanding on reading it is that it would be automatic. But yeah, we'd need to confirm that as it goes through the process.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Questions on that topic? We turn to Ms Wood and the question of designations.
Thank you. What Anna Koto? My name is Anna Wood, and my statement relates to the designations chapter of the Napier Proposed District Plan. I've been employed as a contractor, supporting Napier City Council's City Development Team on a short-term basis. My qualifications include a Master of Planning and a Master of Urban Design. I have 20 years' experience working as an urban designer and urban planner in central and local government, private practice in the third sector. I've been involved in the PDP on a part-time basis for the last three months. I prepared the Section 42A report for the designations chapter. However, I was not involved in preparing the PDP. I have read the submissions on the designations chapter and am ready to respond to any queries about these from the panel. The PDP contains 155 designations, held by 15 requiring authorities. I note that PDP designations held by Hawks Bay Airport Limited and the New Zealand Transport Agency were considered in Hearing Stream 5, supported by a Section 42A report by consultant planner Lily Lawson. The Section 42A report for this hearing considers all other PDP designations. 14 submission points were considered in my Section 42A report. 13 of these were made by a requiring authority on their own designation. One submission was made by a third party. Submissions made by the subject requiring authority relate to edits or modifications requested to correct written and boundary errors, with one exception being a submission by KiwiRail, who requested a heritage overlay be removed from an area of the designation it overlaps with. The submission received from a third party requested discussion with a requiring authority due to the effects from activity under the designation in the underlying industrial zone impacting the adjacent residential zoned land. No correspondence or pre-hearing meetings with submitters were received or held in relation to this chapter. KiwiRail Limited provided a pre-hearing statement in which it had accepted my Section 42A report recommendations regarding the organisation's submission. This included supporting the text edits requested, so to correct the spelling of the organisation's name, to incorporate a capital R in the middle of the name, and not supporting its request to have the heritage overlay that overlaps with one of its designations removed. The panel raised one question in relation to my Section 42A report, seeking clarification on whether my response to the KiwiRail submission referenced above was in sync with another officer's response to the same submission via the earlier heritage hearing stream. My reply confirmed that the officer and I provided the panel with the same advice in regards to the submission, albeit cut in the different context of the two chapters. There are no matters of contention with respect to the designations chapter. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms Wood. Any questions for her?
No, very clear, thank you, Ms Wood.
Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
Just one issue. Earlier on in our process, we raised the question with the officers of, in terms of the recommendation report for designations, do we recommend directly to the requiring authorities? Or do we recommend to the council that it recommends to the requiring authorities? And the officers are going to clarify that for us. Do we have the answer?
No, that's a new question to me, but happy to come back to you on that.
No, the question wasn't posed to you, Ms Wood, it was posed to other officers. Have the other officers?
No, I will have to get back to you, Robert.
Okay, well, if that could be done reasonably promptly, that would be great.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I think that is all in terms of the opening statements for the council officers. We will now turn to submitters. The first submitter for Hearing Stream Seven to be heard is Hawks Bay Protein Limited. Now, I will recuse myself from hearing the submission, and I will recuse myself from deliberating on the further submission and the original submission points that it relates to. I will hand over digitally the Commissioner Van Voorthuisen, who will chair this particular part of the hearing, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Chair. Mr Watson, Ms Heatherington, can you hear us? Oh, I see you're there in person, that's great.
Good morning, Mr Chair, Commissioners and council officers. It's a pleasure to appear for you this morning.
Thank you very much for that. And just for your information, we have diligently read all pre-circulated material, including Mr Watson's legal submissions and Ms Heatherington's your statement of evidence. So, you don't need to read those out loud to us, but you're very welcome to address those, highlight key points for our benefit, and then we'll see if we have questions for you. Alternatively, if you don't wish to highlight any points, that's also fine, and we can proceed straight to questions, but I'll leave it in your hands.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll go through my legal submissions, but I'll skip most of them and just land on a few key points.
Sure, thank you.
So, I'm just going to skip past the introduction, the legal framework, to the point about? starting at paragraph 11, my submissions go through various points that relate to the heavy industry topic. And Hawke's Bay Protein is, I think, just wants to, I always want to indicate support for the general movement that we've seen in the officer's report, away from non-complying activity status for heavy industry. That was the company's primary concern, was that this really left it no appropriate place to locate in the district, and really for itself, left it in a difficult position if it was intending to, say, expand its activities. Just breezing through these various topics that come under heavy industry. We had amendments of the introduction to the general industrial zone, which Hawke's Bay Protein supports the officer's recommendations. We've got definition of heavy industry, and Hawke's Bay's position is that that definition's not really necessary or particularly helpful, given that it draws a bit of an arbitrary line between heavy industry and other industry. And so the company's supportive of deleting that definition from the plan. The flow-on from that is that the company submits that Policy Two could therefore be consequentially deleted. That's the policy that's specific to heavy industry. And Ms Heatherington speaks to that in her evidence. And I would just note that Ravensdown's evidence from Ms Taylor suggests a rewording of Policy Two. That would be Option B from Hawke's Bay Protein's position. Onto Rule Nine, which is the rule that would have classified heavy industry as non-complying. We're of course in full support of that rule being deleted. And then we come to Rule One, which is where a whole lot of Hawke's Bay Protein's submission points sort of converge and cross over. But as far as it relates to heavy industry, we're broadly supportive of the changes that are being made as that rule pertains to heavy industry, and we'll come back to how it relates to, say, wheat industry under the next heading. So the next topic, big topic in the submissions, is wheat industry. The Section 42A report recommends retaining the definition of wheat industry, and together with the supporting rule framework. Hawke's Bay Protein's submission is that that's unnecessary. And the basis of that submission, as I've explained, and is that the clauses in Rule One that are proposed really do the job of the wheat industry rule framework. So the clause that I'm talking about with reference to the version of the rule that's set out in the Section 42A report, Clause A says requires that stormwater and wastewater are discharged through a connection to council-reticulated networks. And then where that requirement is not met, the activity becomes fully discretionary. And then we have Clause B, which requires the activity not be a wheat industrial activity, with the same consequence if it is wheat industrial activity, it becomes discretionary. From the company's submission, Clause A is doing all the heavy lifting there, and is really all that's required. If the activity is discharging its stormwater and wastewater through a connection to the council's reticulated networks, then from a land use planning angle, which is what the district plan is dealing with, I can't see why the, I think the district plan, sorry to back up, the district plan's concern, as distinct from, say, the regional plan, which is concerned with the quality of discharge and the effects on the environment, the district plan's concern is about the location of this activity. Is this an appropriate activity in an appropriate location? If the industrial activity has those connections, my submission is that surely whether it's wheat industry or not is fairly irrelevant to whether it's locating in the correct location. And that if you were to assess the wheat industrial activity as a discretionary activity, you'd probably, the first question you'd ask is, does it have connections to council-reticulated networks? So our submission is that Clause A can really do the job of the wheat industry definition and rule. And that makes the wheat industry framework unnecessary. In paragraph 26 of my submissions, I've noted a point that Ms Heatherington raises about the reference to Rule Eight in Clause B. That's, Rule Eight is the sort of catch-all rule that catches activities that are not otherwise provided for and makes them nondiscretionary. And we've submitted that that reference is a bit confusing, and the reporting officer has agreed with us in the opening statement. So I don't really intend to address that further, but grateful for that being acknowledged. The final topic in my legal submissions is about non-industrial activities in the general industrial zone and the objective and policy framework that relates to those. And really, that's well explained in Ms Heatherington's evidence, so I don't intend to take that further. But she may wish to speak to it. And I think that probably concludes the key points from Hawke's Bay Protein's perspective. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for that, Mr Watson. Commissioner Brosnan, do you have any questions for Mr Watson?
Just a couple around the definition of heavy industry. So I just wanted to get clarity on whether the concern is duplication, because the activity status is already covered elsewhere, or whether the definition in itself introduces some unintended restrictions or uncertainty for you?
So the definition of itself would be pretty harmless in the absence of, I think it's Rule Nine, the nine that makes heavy industry non-complying. It just ties us back into, it ties us, it does tie us into Policy Two, potentially, if Policy Two's being retained. That's not hugely problematic, especially if the amendments to Policy Two that Ravensdown has submitted were to be adopted. I think certainly from the company's perspective, the key point is not being, not having its activities caught by Rule Nine. So but in the absence of Rule Nine, I'm not sure that the definition is really serving much of a purpose in the plan.
And I guess my sort of follow-up question to that is, if the definition is removed, do you consider there's any sort of risk of weakening the clarity for neighbouring landowners or reverse sensitivity management?
I might invite Ms Heatherington to comment on that, if she has any contributions to make.
Am I allowed to talk about the definition of heavy industry? Is that appropriate? Or would you like?
I'm happy, or we can defer that until...
We can defer that.
Happy to defer that question if, I'll pass back to the Chair.
Look, Ms Heatherington, you may as well chip in now while the topic's fresh in our minds, in case we all forget what the issue was.
Okay, well, just going back to the definition of heavy industry. So as a planner, in terms of drafting, I have issue with the definition, and I think that was raised in quite a few submissions, and I think also the reporting officer is on the same page. It's very, it's got very loose terminology. It's very subjective. There's not a lot of certainty. So I think that's going to cause issues for council offices, processing applications, also for applicants. You know, what is a larger area of land? What is large-scale processing? You know, this is a definition, so it's meant to be clear, concise, and the definition as worded in the plan is notified. I do not consider, yeah, it's worthy of inclusion. And on that basis, I also consider that there is, in terms of Policy Two, I don't see any specific point in including a policy which deals with heavy industry when the definition is no longer included in the plan, because that again causes uncertainty and ambiguity for persons involved in trying to interpret the plan itself. In terms of the issue that the other panel member raised about the overall objective and policy framework, I mean, I think one of the points I was going to raise, why I do raise in my evidence, is that I think that the panel needs to go back and look at the policy framework as a whole in terms of its robustness and how it deals with issues. There are a number of inconsistencies, and I think probably potential consequential amendments that are going to be required as a result of council officers' recommendations. But I mean, Objective Three deals with incompatible activities and reverse sensitivity. Objective Four deals with managing effects at the zone interface. So I think it's just standing back and taking a comprehensive view of those.
Commissioner Brosnan?
Yeah, no, I take your point, and I think there's a number of things that staff are going to address in their reply report that will hopefully provide a little bit of clarity, especially around the overall framework. So, yeah, do you have any comment on effects on sort of reverse sensitivity around the removal of?
I do, I deal with those in my evidence, which I'm happy to address now, if you like, or...
I think when I said you could chip in, I really meant it only in terms of the question about the definition of heavy industry. So you free-ranged a bit there, that's okay. So maybe you just sit on that until we turn to you directly. Commissioner Brosnan, any more questions for Mr Watson?
No, quite comfortable. Thank you, Mr Chair.
So Mr Watson and Ms Heatherington, you might obviously listen to this question too. Just in terms of Rule One, which is a concern not only to yourselves but other submitters as well. I understand the points being raised, and earlier on I expressed my view that Ravensdown's solution, you know, had merit in some degree. The issue that's still troubling me, though, is that not only is the location of industry, and wheat industry in this case, a district plan matter, but also the capacity of infrastructure and the provision and availability of infrastructure is also a district planning issue that's always dealt with in district plans. So I'm just wondering, is there scope, rather than just omitting any reference to wheat industry or Clause A of Rule One, for example, is there an option whereby the rule might be drafted such that for industry that's looking to connect to the council's wastewater infrastructure, and it has a significant amount of wastewater wishing to be discharged, that it goes down as, for instance, a restricted discretionary activity route just so that there can be a check on capacity of the infrastructure? Because if it was just straight out permitted, that would then rely on the council's bylaw. And it would seem odd to me that the district plan should permit an activity, and then the bylaw can come along and say, well, no, you can't do it after all, sorry, notwithstanding the fact that you'll permit it. So that's the issue that's been concerning me. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, thank you. It's a good question. I understand the concern there. I actually, my initial response, my initial thinking about it, is that I think it's preferable, actually, for the district plan to permit the activity and leave it to the bylaw to sort the issue out, rather than to have it go through two parallel processes. Because the issue really comes down to whether it's going to be able to discharge its wastes via the bylaw. It either can or it can't. And that's, I think, quite a good, you know, single decision point that then leads you through to an outcome in the district plan.
Right, so...
I think it might be clearer to have, rather than having a, you know, the potential for having a decision under the district plan that's inconsistent with the bylaw, and you'd say, well, we would never do that. And if you're never going to do that, then what's the point of having that decision in the first place?
Yeah, I understand your consent, just to take it a little bit further. And what about an RDA, restricted discretionary activity, that only had one matter of discretion? And that is that permission, or whatever the appropriate word is, can, is or can be given under the bylaw in terms of the wastewater discharge. So very narrowly focused, just a single issue, not opening up to all sorts of other things. Does that have merit, or would you still prefer the permitted activity pathway?
I would still prefer the permitted activity pathway, for the reason that I see there. I think you're going to reach the same answer under the, I mean, I think the answer to those two questions is always going to be the same, so you might as well just ask the question once in the bylaw context.
Yeah, no, understood. All right.
Could I so briefly comment? I guess in terms of councils, drawing on from what Mr Watson said, in terms of councils' Section 32 duties, like, are you putting an applicant through unreasonable consent costs to get to that same position? Is it necessary, is the rule necessary to achieve the purpose?
Yes, yes, I would second that. Something I didn't perhaps comment on as I was going through my submissions was the, actually, the Ravensdown relief, which in relation to this rule on, where Ravensdown's evidence from Ms Taylor requests that this Clause A be split out into two parts so that it allows for either discharge through a connection to a council-connected network or discharge in accordance with the permitted activity rule of a regional plan or discharge permit for the discharge, i.e., it's permitted and self-sufficient in terms of its wastewater and stormwater disposal. And I just want to comment that Hawke's Bay Protein supports that. We think that's a sensible suggestion. And also would comment that I think it fits in with essentially using Clause A to do the job of the wheat industry rule. I, if it's either connected, permitted, consented, then there aren't locational concerns that need to be resolved about the location of that activity, be it wheat or not.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Watson. That's at paragraph 4.15 of the Ravensdown Ms Taylor's evidence, isn't it? I think I indicated earlier to the officers that, you know, I've also viewed that, and I think that suggestion has considerable merit as well. So I guess you're just reinforcing your support for that approach.
Yes, thank you. Mr Chair?
Thank you. All right, Ms Heatherington, so now we'll turn to you. Other than what you've already outlined to us, is there anything further you'd wish to say by way of overview?
Mr Watson's already covered quite a bit, and obviously I've addressed a number of matters. I guess general support of the enabling provisions of the industrial zone in terms of appropriateness of activity status, particularly default activity status. Just reinforcing that I consider it's appropriate that an industrial zone does provide for industrial activities. Therefore, the initial proposal for non-complying status, I think, lacks a lot of merit. In terms of the definitions, definition of heavy industry, we've already traversed that. The definition of wheat industry, I... The definition of wet industry, I don't think that that was, that was dealt with in a lot of detail in the reporting officer's report. So I'm not sure if she has anything to add on that. As Mr Watts has stated, I think that the definition is not required, that it's adequately dealt with by other plan provisions. And my reference in that context is to the rule we've just been discussing, Rule One. And I support the amendments to the rule, I guess, in a couple of ways. Firstly, as suggested by Ms Taylor in the Ravensdown submission, in dealing with the stormwater and servicing aspect. But then also her recommended amendments to that rule still retain reference to wet industrial activity, which I don't consider as appropriate. Obviously, there still needs to be some clause in that rule dealing with ensuring that the general industrial standards are met. And then obviously the advice note at the end of that, that rule would need to be amended consequentially. So I guess in terms of that rule, I don't think I need to go through that any more detail, we've already, we've already considered that. And yes, again, just reiterating the, the section 32 duties of the council. Sorry, I'm just chopping and changing a bit through my evidence, trying not to repeat some material that's already been covered. In terms of non-industrial activities, so I'm going back to around paragraph 4.3 of my evidence. So there was a suggestion there that objective two be amended to include the word "and" in there. Obviously, as you're aware, reverse sensitivity is quite a significant issue in relation to industrial activities. And so I think it's, there is, it's important that the purpose of those industrial, the industrial zone is held up by the district plan. And I just consider that the inclusion of the word "and", as I've suggested in paragraph 4.5 of my evidence, for objective two reinforces that. Similarly, in relation to policy six, I, I'm not quite sure whether the reporting officer has dealt with that in response to panel questions, so happy to be directed. Like, I recognise that rule six has been dealt with, but I'm not sure that policy six has, but I could be incorrect on that. And again, that suggested restructuring of policy six is just re-emphasising that the, the efficiency and functionality of an industrial zone for industrial purposes is at the forefront of also looking, considering the issue of reverse sensitivity. Just moving on to, yeah, conclusions, reiterating supporting the general enabling provisions, as I said earlier, I think that a number of consequential amendments are required, and it's just obviously important to have clear drafting and consistent provisions throughout the plan. I also consider that it's important that servicing recognises the nuanced situations, as Mr Watts and myself have already alluded to, particularly in the context of Awatoto area, where the Hawke's Bay rendering plant is located. Obviously, there is the ability to obtain resource consents from the regional council for site-specific solutions, which in some case is the only option. And I think that that should not be, there should not be additional requirements for district council consents as a result of that, that, that if you've got those consents, then that's great. I mean, we're all looking and achieving the same environmental outcomes. And I do therefore think that is important, that that is recognised in Rule One, and that provision is made for that as a permitted activity. Obviously, if those standards, you know, cannot be met, you can't connect to the council systems, or you don't have the required discharge consents, yes, yeah, move through to a resource consent requirement, but I don't think that that should be an automatic requirement at the outset. Other than that, thanks very much for your time, and happy to take any further questions.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Brosnan, any questions?
No further questions, thank you.
Ms Heatherington, just a couple of matters, but before I do that, just mainly for the benefit of the officers. When I read through your evidence, I just basically put some tics next to some paragraphs. So for the officer's benefit, that was paragraphs 4.4, 4.5, 4.7, 4.17, and 4.18. So I thought you raised some interesting issues there, and I don't have any concern with what you were suggesting. We've discussed Rule One quite a lot, so I don't want to traverse there anymore. I look forward to the officer's reply on that. Just in terms of policy two, I was just wondering about sort of not throwing out the baby with the bathwater. What if we just, in the title of, yeah, have you got rule, policy two in front of you there?
Yes, I do, yeah.
Yeah. What if in the title we just crossed out the word "heavy"? And then in the first, in the first sentence of the policy, just also crossed out the word "heavy"?
Yes, to a certain extent. The policy two as currently worded also refers to wet industry in brackets in the second line, which my argument would be that that should be deleted as well. And then the second part of that, so after the bracket at the end of wet industry, then also refers to locate where appropriate services are available. Sorry, I'm working on the version as recommended by the reporting officer. So then I guess it's how you interpret that in terms of the discussion we've already had about the level of servicing and the ability to require, the ability to obtain specific resource consents from a regional council. So I think that if you were to tinker with that policy, those things would need to be kept in mind, particularly, as I said earlier, to ensure the consistency of policy provisions.
Yes, so we might say, looking at that, you know, the brackets in wet industry, you've suggested that could be deleted, and then it goes on to say to locate where appropriate services are available, comma, and we could have an additional phrase that says, or appropriate authorisations are obtained from the regional council, or some words to that extent, just that would then link into the changes suggested to the rule, Rule One by various parties.
Yes, so ignoring scope issues. So you could even delete the reference to appropriate services, and then you were focusing on adverse effects.
Yeah.
Which might be a simpler way of dealing with it.
Yeah, thank you. I think scope's not really a concern. I mean, changes to provisions can go both up and down the hierarchy, and clause, clause ten two B of the first schedule is a very useful clause, so maybe I just invite the officers to think some more about that, in terms of amendments to policy two, rather than total deletion of that. And if the officers need to discuss that with either Ms Heatherington or Ms Taylor, then they should feel free to do that. But that was the only issue I wanted to put to you, thank you.
Okay, and sorry, Mr Watts has just pointed out, policy three in that context also might need some further consideration. The wording of policy three, which is connecting to a reticulated network.
Yes, or perhaps even there's a potential, no, that's, no, that's a good point. All right, thank you. All right, so that was any, all the questions I had, or just check with Commissioner Brosnan, anything additional you'd wish to ask either of Mr Watts or Ms Heatherington?
No, thank you, I think that was really helpful, the wording changes that you just worked through on the fly with the chair, so thank you.
That's great, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Hawke's Bay Protein Representatives, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Van Vorthuisen. I'll just bring my laptop back to life. So we have next Port of Napier Limited, and Mr Littlejohn is online, and Ro Botham is here in person to talk to her evidence, thank you for that, we have read your pre-circulated evidence. And who else do we have here?
David Broad, GM Assets Infrastructure.
Thank you.
Hi, Hannah Strauss, Environmental and Sustainability Manager.
Thank you very much. So do we hand over to Mr Littlejohn to kickstart?
Yeah, yes please.
All right, thank you, Mr Littlejohn.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, panel, is everyone hearing me okay?
Yes, we are.
Very good. I did email to the hearings' email address about a two-page legal submission. I'm not sure whether that has found its way to you.
Not that I have.
No, it was only, it was only just this morning. I'm happy to share it on the screen or just talk through it, on the assumption that you'll be provided or email a copy of it shortly.
No, no. We do have supplementary statement of evidence from Ms Ro Botham, but that's the only additional information we have this morning. So if you could talk to your legal submissions, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Well, do you want me to put them on the screen and read through them, or just?
Certainly, that would be good if we can.
It's a simple, it's a very simple point, where are we? Share, there we go. Right.
Is that Miss John?
Yeah.
Is that there? Can everyone see that?
Yes. Just, if you could blow it up slightly, that would be great. Oh, to another year, yeah, thank you, that's great.
All right, okay, it is really just a simple point. By way of introduction, and thank you for hearing from us, Napier Port has provided evidence from Ms Ellen Ro Botham in relation to its submissions on the general industrial zone provisions, I understand you've read that. The issues addressed in that evidence and the planning recommendations in response were generally straightforward and non-controversial. The port was not intending to present any specific legal submissions in support of this hearing. The majority of the port's interest in the proposed plan has been dealt with with respect to the port zone and the noise chapter. Its interest in the general industrial zone, as you would have picked up from Ms Ro Botham's evidence, is that it does operate a few sites in the industrial zone that are used for container handling and storage. Following the 42A report by the panel, though, a series of questions were put to the reporting officer, and responses were given, and there was a document that was uploaded after the 11th of July. The interchange between the panel and the reporting officer, specifically with respect to GIZR 6.1C, which was question six in that document, has raised a legal issue on which the port wishes to make submissions. These submissions in relation to the proposed drafting of GIZR 6.1C are without prejudice to Napier Port's primary position, for the reasons set out by Ms Ro Botham in her evidence, that this particular aspect of the rule is unnecessarily duplicative of other rules in the proposed plan, that already seek to manage the effects proposed to be managed by this rule, and ought to be deleted. So the issue that has caused the legal radar to go off is the addition by way of the panel's questioning of this Pandora area to that particular standard. The simple legal point here is that no submission on the proposed plan sought amendment to what was formerly GIZR 6.8.3 as notified, to include additional GIZ areas to which it would apply. Now, there is significant case law, with which you'll be familiar, on the issue of whether a submission on a Schedule One proposed plan process is on the plan change, in terms of clause six of that schedule. Quite a lot of ink has been spilt on that particular issue over the years, usually by submitters who want to achieve an outcome that they did not adequately address when they made their submission originally. But this is not the issue here. There is no party seeking to justify a proposed change to the plan on the basis of a submission whose scope to do so might be unclear or ambiguous. So all of the case law, the Clearwater line of authorities, the Albany line of authorities, really is of no assistance or interest here in my submission. This is a simple clause 10 issue, in that any amendment to the proposed plan must arise from matters raised in submissions. Unlike other bespoke planning processes, we've seen them over the years, the IHP for the Auckland Unitary Plan, these ISPPs under the urban intensification legislation, which provided a broader power to make changes to the document not raised in submissions via that enabling legislation. But this is not one of those scenarios, this is, and I don't mean to demean it at all, a standard Schedule One planning process. So by reference to Appendix B of the officer's report, which is the proposed table that sets out all of the submissions and further submissions, no submission was made seeking the addition of other GIZ zoned areas to this rule. Napier Port appears to have been the only submitter that submitted on the rule, and its submission was in opposition. Accordingly, my submission is there's no legal ability for the panel to introduce the amendment it has suggested, it's out of scope of submissions. Now, to round that off, Commissioner Van Vorthuisen, you mentioned clause 10 to B of the schedule, Schedule One, and indeed, that is the key area that you would be interested in. The provision, though, enables you to make changes that may include matters relating to any consequential alterations necessary arising from submissions, and secondly, any other matter relevant to the proposed plan arising from the submissions. So even though it is a broad power to make consequential amendments and any other relevant changes, they still have to arise from submissions for them to be legitimately made to the proposed plan once it's been notified. So the simple point, the simple legal point that Napier Port makes is that, and it's without prejudice to its primary position, that this is an unnecessary condition on this rule, is that there's nothing that would enable you to make the addition proposed to the, where are we, to the, there we go, pull that up. So this is the change that was proposed here, to include Pandora as an additional area. Now, of course, that's, that's a pretty obvious request by the port, because it is the main area in which it has its container handling areas, but, and Ms Ro Botham's supplementary evidence addresses this again, it is also an area that is well buffered from any other areas that might contain sensitive activities. So that's, that's the simple legal point I wished to make on behalf of the port, given this issue that arose in the interchange between the panel and the reporting officer. And as you've pointed out, Mr Chair, Ms Ro Botham has prepared some supplementary evidence just to address that a little bit further as well.
Okay, thank you. So the gist of what your point is being made to Mr Littlejohn is that you are submitting that Pandora can't be added to that list of areas of the GIZ that this rule would relate to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll look forward to Ms Ro Botham's supplementary evidence on that point. So would you like to talk to, oh, you haven't had a chance obviously to read it.
Excuse me, Chair, I've got a question for council.
Yes, certainly, Commissioner.
So just, can you just return to that paragraph you had on your shared screen, which was outlined in the officer's response to the questions posed by the panel? Can you bring that up again on your screen, Mr Littlejohn, just for?
Yep, there we go.
Yeah, and if you just scroll down a bit, turn to the next page, there's what the officers are recommending. Is your concern only with the word Pandora, or is it, do you have any issue with the other red text, which was, the intent of that red text was to attempt to address issues raised by other submitters that we're going to hear from later in the day? But only the word Pandora you have issue with, or is there anything else?
As far as, as far as the legal issue, yes, it's Pandora, and the inclusion of it from a submission matter, Ms Ro Botham can talk to you a little bit more about the other addition, because I'm sure she has some thoughts about it from making the rule, if it is to be retained, a lot clearer.
All right, okay.
But I'm not, I'm not submitting that that additional change is out of scope of a submission.
All right.
I'm saying it would be a matter that could legitimately be tw-. I'm saying it would be a matter that could legitimately be tweaked in the interests of providing clarity if the particular rule is to be retained.
All right. Now, thank you for that. That's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roe Botham, I'd like to talk to your evidence, and I probably mean go through it in detail if you can because it's an important issue. Thank you.
Okay, Tenekato Katoa Kua, Alan, Robitha Maho. I prepared primary evidence on behalf of Port of Napier Limited relating to their submissions on the general industrial zone chapter of the proposed district plan. In my evidence in chief, I express support for a number of recommendations set out in the Section forty-two A report, specifically regarding GIZ issue five, GIZ objective four, policy one, policy seven, and rule seven. In contrast, I do not support the recommendations of the Section forty-two A report with respect to stormwater management under GIZ R one. In my view, the inclusion of condition A within GIZ R one is unnecessary and duplicates the consenting responsibilities of HPRC. I recommend the deletion of condition A from sitting in the hearing earlier today. I understand there's been some further discussion on that, although I don't address um, rule one further in the supplementary evidence. I'm open to taking questions on that matter. The second matter I did not support in the Section forty-two A report was proposed changes to the management of container noise under GIZ R six. In my view, conditions B and C of the note of um, rule six lack clarity and are not easily interpreted in the context of the plan's mapping tools. Furthermore, these permitted activity conditions duplicate existing noise provisions under the noise chapter and in my opinion are unnecessary. Since lodging my evidence, I've had the benefit of reviewing the panel's questions to the report and the reporting officer's response. The remainder of this statement responds to events that have occurred since my evidence was filed and is to assist the panel. The panel provided a list of questions to the reporting officers for hearing seven. Ms. Hemming responded to the GIZ questions on the eleventh of July, twenty twenty-five. Question six relates to um, rule six one C regarding container movements. The panel identifies that the key issue is the noise of stacking containers, loud banging, and forklift engine revving in proximity to residential areas and suggests amended wording for that rule. As we've, as seen in Mr. Um, I forgot Kit's last name.
Littlejohn.
Littlejohn, thank you. Sorry, Kit. As we've seen in Mr. Littlejohn's legal submissions, the key changes to those wordings were about removing delivery so that the provision only related to the movement within outdoor storage areas, but also inserting Pandora to be captured by that rule, but removing Awatoto. The reporting officer largely accepts the panel's suggested wording and considers the rule should apply to all industrial areas in Napier except the port. The reporting officer's reply also implies that imposing a curfew on otherwise permitted activities would, in addition to noise, control effects associated with nighttime vehicle movements, lighting, amenity values, and dust. As set out in my primary evidence, Napier Port's container depots in the Pandora industrial area are well buffered from any sensitive receivers. The Pandora industrial area more generally is also well buffered from residential activities by the large format retail zone to the south, open space zone to the west and north, and the light industrial zone to the east. While there is an area of mixed-use zone located in the northeast of the Pandustrial, uh, Pandora industrial area, I note that the adjoining activities are largely industrial in nature and include car dealerships and automotive services, automotive services. I understand the purpose of the general industrial zone is to enable industrial activities while managing effects on sensitive receiving environments. It is not quite clear why there is a need to impose a curfew on existing permitted activities, which, to my knowledge, are not causing adverse noise effects on any sensitive receivers. In any case, and as noted in my, in my primary evidence, all activities in the district plan are required to comply with the provisions of the noise chapter, which contains limits on night, nighttime noise specifically as follows. In the table, I set out the residential zone noise limits and the general industrial zone noise limits. I note that in accordance with noise standard one A of the proposed plan, where noise is generated by an activity on a site in one zone is received by an activity on a site in a different zone, the activity generating the noise must comply with the noise limits and standards of the receiving site. So noise generated in an industrial zone but received at a residential zone must comply with the residential zone limits. A very similar framework applies under the operative district plan, but I note that the proposed noise limits are five to ten decibels lower than the operative noise limits. Furthermore, I do not consider the imposition of a curfew would meaningfully address the other effects implied by the reporting officer. Traffic, light, visual amenity and visual amenity matters are addressed by other proposed provisions, for example, the transport chapter, the light chapter, building setback, and height restrictions under the general industrial zone chapter. I therefore remain of the view that um, general industrial zone rule six one C should be deleted in its entirety. If the panel is minded to retain the condition, I note as Mr. Littlejohn has set, set out in his submissions that there is no submission scope to include Pandora as one of the areas referred to within it. By reference to Appendix B to the Section forty-two A report, the only submitter on GIZ R six was Napier Port, and that submission opposed the rule. No submissions thought they'd sought the addition of other general industrial areas to the condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roe Botham. Don't mind some questions. Just a couple from me to start things off. You, you indicate or point out quite rightly that there are noise limits that apply to the GIZ. But the rules suggest that this is a sort of a control over activity within the site, not necessarily, as you point out, specifically related to, to noise, but there could be other effects going on. Taking into account what you've said about the context of the site at Pandora. Do you see that they could work in a complimentary fashion? One is a strict control on activity at certain hours of the day, and then the other is a broader general limit on noise levels. And also that, that, that sometimes, as you probably know in your experience, noise standards can be quite problematic to, to address in terms of measuring and monitoring and enforcing and things like that. And it may be simpler through rules, other controls, just to deal with it in another way. So I'm, I'm interested in your comments why it couldn't be seen as a complimentary kind of control rather than a, an additional control, if you know what I mean.
Yes. In preparing the supplementary evidence, I went back and had a look at the Section thirty-two report, and I couldn't find any evidence that there is a nighttime noise issue associated with container noise in these general industrial areas. The Section thirty-two report just generally refers to provisions seeking to manage effects at the boundary and manage effects on sensitive receivers. As I've pointed out, and as I think has been a common theme in submissions on the general industrial zone, it is the appropriate location to put industrial activities, and the nature of some activities is that they occur overnight or twenty-four seven. And in my view, just because an activity occurs doesn't mean that it needs to be controlled. Under the operative district plan, this activity is occurring as a permitted activity. And I, the Section thirty-two report makes an assumption that cost to, given the proposed general industrial zone provisions are assumed to largely replicate the operative provisions, there'll be very limited cost to plan users. I think that's at about page forty of the Section thirty-two report. And so I, I think that has been an assumption which has not been tested, and this rule highlights that activities will be subject to the cost of resource consenting without an equivalent benefit to sensitive receivers.
Okay, thank you. And the other question relates to context. So could be inferred from your sort of final paragraph in your supplementary that there is a context difference between Ahuriri GIZ and Pandora GIZ. Would you accept that?
Yes, I would accept that. Based on a review of the planning maps, you can see that the Pandora area is well buffered and some of those other industrial areas are not as well buffered from residential zones.
Thank you. Questions from the panel? Commissioner Van Boorthuisen?
No, no questions. Just in terms of the provision we've just been addressing, certainly the exchange we had with the offices by way of our questions was very much focused on the Ahuriri industrial area and its very close proximity to residential properties on the, on the hill right next door. So that's been the focus, certainly of my thoughts in terms of those provisions. And take on board the points made by legal council about the word Pandora. What I would be interested in asking the officers is, um, in terms of this provision, it seems kind of odd to me that Pandora was not included as notified. Was that, was that deliberate or was that an oversight? I mean, it's, it's just a matter of interest.
Do you mind if I pass this on to Flora as I wasn't involved in the, the drafting?
Okay, yeah.
Yes, so I also wasn't involved in the drafting of this, but I suspect it was an oversight.
Yes. It was very odd that it wasn't included, but I understand the legal issue being raised about scope.
Um, Mr. Chair, would it be okay if I responded to that question?
Yes, certainly, yes.
In my opinion, Mr. Commissioner Van Boorthuisen, I, based on the drafting of the proposed as notified provision, I would say it was deliberate because the notified wording included the word only, implying that there would be area, industrial areas where nighttime activities would be appropriate.
Yep. Yes, it's really just a matter, I was just curious as to why it wasn't there initially, but thank you for that.
Okay, I think that's been a helpful discussion and we will look forward to the council officer's response on that matter, including scope as well, because that is, is a valid point. Mr. Littlejohn raises. Thank you for that.
Sir, can I just, just round out on that particular last point there?
Certainly.
I mean, the officer speculating that it is an oversight is, like, to some extent, unless you've got the author in the room, you can equally speculate the point that Ms. Roe Botham makes, that it was deliberate based on the drafting because of all of the reasons she has outlined in her evidence, that it is a very different context for this particular area than the other ones. So I, I, with respect, I don't think there's much weight you can give either way there. The plan was drafted as it was. Whether it was an oversight or deliberate in the absence of the actual author just has to remain a mystery. But the issue remains a legal point, and that's essentially the point that the port is making on that. And, and look, I do want to acknowledge, Chair, that some plans do adopt a belt and braces approach to these sorts of things, and I'm here referring to your question to Ms. Roe Botham about whether a noise control in the noise chapter can also be complemented by effectively a, a bright line test or a, or a specific hourly limit within a particular provision. And, and look, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that. I'll accept that. But you have to be very clear that what you're trying to achieve by that particular blunt instrument is not otherwise already attended to by the noise provisions, that there's something specific about these areas and or the receiving environments that they are adjacent to that requires an additional limit. And, and on the face of it, you, even by reference to the Section thirty-two report, as Ms. Roe Botham has mentioned, there, there's not a lot of thinking has been done about this. It just seems to be one of those things that has arisen as a good idea. Now, there's nothing wrong with, with plans based on good ideas, but you still need to have some evidence as to why you might want to some, why you might want to constrain these general industrial areas over and above what they are otherwise already constrained by.
Thank you, Mr. Littlejohn.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for allowing the presentations.
Okay. No, thank you. And I think the reporting officer has some matters to evaluate in her reply. So thank you. Thank you very much for your attendance. Much appreciated and helpful. Thank you. Now, do we have online Mr. Barna Thompson? Or the New Zealand Heavy Hallage Association?
Indeed, I am here, yes.
Oh, great. So we've, we've read your pre-circulated statement, so thank you for that. Given that it's largely a sort of support for the recommended changes, perhaps you'd like to focus on any sort of key points you'd like to make? Or any, any matters that aren't in agreement with, on this particular matter?
Yes, for sure, yes. And listen, yeah, I just have a couple of pages of short notes just to identify what, what the point is that we're trying to make about the industrial zones, so. Yep, I can proceed just to, just to run through those if that's okay now.
Yes, certainly.
Right, yep. So yeah, so as we've noted in our written submission for this hearing, so there are no rules in the proposed plan that actually specifies what the planning controls are for relocated buildings in the two industrial zones. And obviously, we advocate that these should be specified. Obviously, relocated buildings are a useful option, cost-effective option in many cases. And so I note that the writer of the Section forty-two A report agrees with this approach. Now, in our previous submissions to other hearings on this plan, so we saw that there's standardized rules for relocated buildings across the various zones. And there was wording that was circulated following the last hearing that was acceptable to the association and and there were a couple of minor changes that we sought to that, and I note that they have been included in the proposed wording for these standards. So that's good. Thank you. However, in relation to the two industrial zones, we have promoted a change to the standard wording to not require the relocated building report to be completed. And so I guess this is the, the main point that we want to make. So we've rightly argued in our view that in the residential zones, that there should be an expectation that the house owner needs to complete the reinstatement work on a house relocated to a new site within a reasonable timeframe. And further, that the work that is undertaken is identified in advance of the report, and that's on that building condition report. But for industrial zones, we, we do recommend that the cost and the logistics of getting a building report doesn't need to be incurred. Now, when you look at the types of buildings that may be relocated into industrial zones, these may be workshops, sheds, garages, and maybe office space for staff. The property owner would generally want these buildings to be utilized within a quick timeframe and would have the means and motivation to get this completed. In residential areas, there's more of an emphasis on the amenity and aesthetics of a home, whereas in industrial zones, I'd argue that the buildings are more functional. And while the work to be completed is still necessary, the need to identify this work beyond what's mentioned in the standards is, in our view, not required. So we'd still maintain that the timeframe for the foundation, being on foundations in two months and the weather tightness work would need to be completed within four months. However, the need to detail this work on the relocated building report is an unnecessary step in our view. As noted previously, we're prepared to accept the nine-month timeframe as the last completion date for all other items listed on the, in the permitted activity rules. And these include such as the closing in a foundations and repair of any minor damage to the building that may have occurred in the transit. So, but that's the main point that I want to make and make comment on was just about our recommendation right from the start, I guess, of our first submission to this plan, that in the industrial zones, that the building condition report may not be required. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Mr. Barna Johnson? Commissioner Rosman?
Thank you very much for, for your submission and the further evidence. I was just looking around your submission on GIZ rule six and obviously noting you've supported the officer's move to clarify that rule, but the officers' move to clarify that rule. But could you elaborate if there were any specific drafting elements that you thought still needed refinement? There was a comment in there around unintended costs or compliance hurdles, and I just wasn't sure if you had landed on the specific wording that you were comfortable with in that space?
Uh, sorry, just point out to me exactly what you're talking about?
Uh, Rule Six.
Rule Six. Okay, so I guess, so the, in our submission, in our schedule to our written items to this, so we suggested removing the first two clauses. So that's A and B, yeah, related to the building report?
Yep.
So that, and, and then just sort of consequential changes, I guess, to the other standards that are mentioned there. So that was really it, just sort of going through and just removing those two main A and Bs, so.
Yeah, so it was really just cross referencing that you wanted to address thereafter the removal?
Correct, yes, yes, that's right.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
Yeah, just, do you still have that rule in front of you, GIZ R6C.1?
I do, yes.
I understand the point you're making about the relocated building report and the deletions you've sought. If the panel was to agree with that, if you turned your minds to the matters of discretion, would we still need all of those matters of discretion? Neighborhood character, visual amenity, et cetera? Or could it just default down to D, for example?
Ah, that is a good question, yes. Yes, I guess the, I guess you're exactly right. Yeah, the, the issues around neighborhood character and amenity, yeah, and perhaps not so important in a residential area.
Are you, are you happy just to give that some thought? And maybe I could invite the officers to liaise with you and just see if there should be or can be any amendment to the matters of discretion, both in the GIZ and the LIZ provisions? If the panel's in mind to remove the relocated building report as you request, I think that would just be a, a tidy up matter that would need to follow.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it would just be if, for example, that, you know, like the standards were not able to, or, you know, like when the consents were applied for, that if the timeframe, for example, was not within the timeframe, what would happen? Then it would default to discretionary, wouldn't it? And perhaps that's not desirable. That's the only thing off the top of my head. But yes, happy to think about that some more. That's, it's a good point that you've raised.
Yeah, and I think it would never go full discretionary. It would only ever be restricted discretionary. My concern is more about the matters of discretion, particularly A, B, and maybe even C. I don't know. Public open spaces in an industrial zone, probably not so much of an issue. Yes, I think that makes some tweaking, and I'd be happy for you to work with the officers on some wording that between, if you put your heads together, you can come up with some wording for us.
I'm sure that we could. Listen, it's a, it's a good, relevant point that you've made. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Barna Johnson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Last submitters in person, Mr. Sandel and Ms. McKinnon. Would you like to join us at the table, as they say? Now, we have your pre-circulated written statement here, Mr. Sandel. Thank you for that. And we have had the benefit of your earlier attendance at the hearing, so thank you for that, too. So how would you like us to proceed? Do you want to talk through your written statement?
Yes, Chair, if that's okay.
Yes, certainly.
Just more than everyone. And yeah, thanks for having us here again today. And I just want to, I guess my name's Tim Sandel. I'm the property owner at 10 Lampden Road, which overlooks the Ahuriri Iron Pot and more specifically 85A Battery Road. I've lived at the address since 1997 and have participated in the two previous plan changes. Today, I'll discuss a number of matters that are interconnected between Hearing Stream Four Noise, Hearing Stream Six Rezoning, and Hearing Stream Seven Industrial. This written statement builds on the presentation presented in Hearing Stream Six on the 17th of June and other evidence presented, being the NCC Commission 2013 OPUS report. I guess, I haven't got it written here, but I guess I'm here today because of the transition of the proposed district plan recommends to change parts of MUDS to GIZ. I know this is discussing the GIZ, the GIZ part of the plan. And so that's sort of what brings us, brings us here today. In terms of the sort of current status, we've had the proposed district plan recommends parts of MUDS to GIZ. The Section 42A report rezoning recommends including all of 85A Battery Road in the GIZ. In the initial report, it had a bit of a sliver that that wasn't covered. Prior to Hearing Stream Six, we met with council consultant planner and the fuel companies, and a precinct subzone idea was recommended over a defined area, including all of 85A Battery Road. Based on 2.3 at Hearing Stream Six, we submitted that the precinct zone had merit and that it would enable, given the fuel companies what they were looking for, protection from increased residential development next to major hazard facilities, and giving the existing and future nearby residents protection, protection from loss of amenity value that could result from the change from MUDS to GIZ, and from what has been well documented and demonstrated from past and present operations at 85 Battery Road. Disappointingly, at the Hearing Stream Six, the six of fuel companies did not support the precinct subzone idea, and subsequently, the precinct subzone idea, while suggested by the consultant planner and the council, has not been supported by the consultant planner or panel, and has no longer been considered an option. That's my interpretation of the reply. And I had a question to councillor Brown. Sorry, I just thought councillor Brown was on the panel today, but I got mixed up on that over the weekend.
As you know, Mr. Sandel, we're not here to revisit the, that particular hearing in terms of the zoning and things, but we're not here to revisit matters that have already been covered by previous hearings.
Yeah.
So she was in for another hearing completely, so.
I figured that out.
Thank you.
This morning. Okay. And just, I'll just make some comment, comment around the Z Energy and the fuel companies. And to be candid, I was disappointed with the verbal submission made by Z Energy and the fuel company's representative. At a pre-meeting, we felt we'd had made progress towards understanding the needs and concerns of the residents and the fuel companies, and the present concept had merit, which they chose to dismiss. Well, that is their right. What was disappointing was for their representative to say, among other things, that the storage of shipping containers stacked to 24 metres in height would be an acceptable use of 85A Battery Road. Given they are now, given they are now aware of some of the issues through the evidence we have provided in the Napier City Council Commission 2013 OPUS report, and the effects in Z All Container Operation had on the amenity values of nearby residents, it seemed to be totally disingenuous, to say the least, especially given these people don't live in Napier or have ever visited the site. They felt that they are pushing the council to get what they want, which the MUDS to GIZ provides without care for the unintended consequences of the changes on the surrounding residents. So I just had the question, a couple of questions here. I'm not sure whether that's appropriate, but that was given the evidence we presented. Do you really believe that containers stacked to 24 metres high with associated truck heavy machinery and container movements is an appropriate, appropriate use of 85A Battery Road? And I'll just note in the picture that the containers that are stacked there are only stacked to 11.6 metres high. So we're talking about something that is twice that height. No, no answer. Is the storage of logs and associated truck and heavy machinery movements an appropriate use for 85A Battery Road? And will the proposed changes protect the surrounding residents from loss of amenity values? So I note that since the Hearing Stream Six meeting, Z Energy and the fuel companies have not engaged with us. I just made that point because within the Section 42A reply, it sort of, it could have been interpreted that they had engaged with us since the hearing, but they, they haven't engaged with us. I guess I felt I was going to engage with them, but I decided I'd wait till after this, this hearing, prior to further engagement. And the only matter that has changed since the hearing is that they are trying to sublease the front of 85 Battery Road through Colliers, and it's, and it's been advertised as excellent access and layout ideal for truck parking, container storage, handling, and loading and unloading. Will the rules in the PDP assist in preventing this activity? Another question I've got on my mind. So just on noise, so the shift from MUDS to GIZ provides for significant change in noise limits?
Sorry, just to stop you there, Mr. Sandel, we have already addressed noise provisions of the plan in another hearing. So I'll let you read through this, just to cover that off. But I would note that we have addressed noise provisions.
Yes, I do have a specific question at the end of that, which will be, which is sort of relevant, I guess, just especially given the lady who spoke just before us.
Right, okay.
I'm quite interested in that. So anyway, we'll take that as read. I guess it's, you know, there's a significant change for us because this is going, this is about going from MUDS to GIZ.
Yep.
And so, you know, it is a significant change. So we're not necessarily challenging what's in the GIZ. We're just challenging the fact that as a consequence of the change from MUDS to GIZ, you know, we are now having to manage the, I guess, the effects that may come from now this operation, this area being, being under the GIZ rules. And they're quite substantive changes. And, you know, we are very supportive of the additional points that have been added under, under, I think it was in Section One of the, of the noise limits. And I just called them Point A, B, and C. I guess the, just critical for us is that these noise, those controls, especially Point A, is, stays within the plan change. So, you know, I think it seems to be a key factor that was expressed at the previous, previous meeting. And it's really important that they stay, that those clauses stay there. I'd hate to think that they just inadvertently got taken out somewhere further down the, down the pathway at the request of, of another submitter. So just managing non-compliance. In the Section 42A report rezoning, it discusses the shift from MUDS to GIZ for all 85 Battery Road as being the most efficient and effective way of managing the change. So just sort of, really, I guess my first question around that was, who, who is the most efficient and effective? Or is it for the councils, the fuel companies, or the residents? So sure about that. In the Section 42A report, reply, there's, while we recognize that some of the changes made in the PDP and subsequent amendments will make a meaningful difference to the issues identified, Tim Sandel, Alicia McKinnon, it is noted that the PDP seeks to largely manage effects on residential amenity through performance standards, noise traffic, height setbacks, et cetera. This would in most cases require technical input to determine compliance. However, it may also capture a broader range of industrial activities that could otherwise be contemplated in the PDP today. And then there will likely continue to be a role for them as neighbours in the compliance enforcement and alerting the council to potential infringements. So just sort of appreciating that, I guess, another question was, you know, really appreciating how difficult it is, you know, how hard and technically challenging it is to measure and enforce compliance. And I think I comment, I was just listening on the previous submitter from the, maybe it was associated with the report, which was always, was to confirm how, how hard noise is to measure and assess. And, you know, we've had lots of examples where, you know, people have come up and either there's been an issue with the equipment, or there's been an issue, there's been too much bird noise, there's been too much wind, and a whole range of factors that make it very difficult to actually measure, measure noise or, or other activities. And there's just a few, few questions there around really, is it, is it the residents' role to be the frontline of compliance and enforcement? And I guess, as I said, there is an opportunity to shut the door on some of these activities. And I think at the previous Hearing Stream, we spoke, sort of indicated that, that like, we're aware that containers and log storage and sort of trucks parks is, is not working, okay? And that, so, but we don't know, in the future, there could be other things that, that come up that we haven't even thought about today. And it's important that the rules protect us for the future. But I guess I did ask, is, you know, is there an opportunity to shut the door on the things that we don't, we do know that don't work in that particular area? Which, you know, we do know, you know, we have plenty of evidence in that OPUS report that the, you know, container storage and the, and the truck parking, you know, are things that don't work for, for that particular area. And then just general, that have been recommended, that a precinct zone, a precinct subzone idea would require engagement with existing landowners in the subzone. So I took that from the previous sort of questioning at Hearing Stream Six. I guess, is there a different level of engagement when we're going from MUDS to GIZ? It seems that just a bit of a free pass there for how that might work. If it was going, in the present idea, we, when we muted the present idea, we, the thing came up, have we talked to, you know, has the council talked to the, the other landowners or leaseholders within that, within what was proposed as a subzone area? But under this, just going from MUDS to GIZ, it doesn't seem that there has to be further engagement with them. You know, I guess this whole process is engagement, but it seemed that there seemed to be a next level where maybe it was going to be a bit more constraining on them. So sort of interested to understand that, that a bit. Unfortunately, what is proposed is leaving gaps open for industrial activities to stretch the rules and be open to affected parties to lead the compliance effort. While we, it may be efficient and easier stated in the Section 42 reports for the council to have the broader GIZ apply to all these areas. Unfortunately, you know, we don't see it as one peg fits all holes. Sometimes the easiest route is not the best. And we do, you know, I think even maybe the speakers before us just now were saying, you know, what we're talking about is specifically around the fuel company areas and 85A Battery Road, which is now getting incorporated into the GIZ. You know, I don't necessarily, I think the, probably the Pandora Ahuriri, sorry, the Pandora Awatoto industrial areas. I don't specifically have a view on those. I'm, I'm not, not up to speed with those particular areas. I think the change, I think change is necessary. The MUDS is not completely working for the fuel companies or the resident, residents. I think we're close to finding the right answers if the parties, including fuel companies and council, want to. It may be harder to do now, but better for the long-term solution. I still think the precinct zone has merit. If legally, it can be fitted into the GIZ transition. And 85A Battery Road has a level of uniqueness about it that needs to be managed. And this is well documented in the OPUS report. And was supported by the councillors of the day. So I've covered a few points associated with the MUDS to GIZ proposed change. There are other points that impact amenity values in terms of light, visual, dust, vibration, odor, and shading that we raised in our Hearing Stream Six report. I just thank the panel for your time today.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sandel. Ms. McKinnon, do you have words of advice for the hearing?
What do you mean, in terms of what particular rules or?
Well, we're looking today at the provisions of the general industrial zone.
Yeah, I'm with you.
And if I can infer from Mr. Sandel, he's asserting that the provisions of the zone aren't sufficient enough, together with the noise provisions, to address the issues that you've raised today and previous hearings. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Sandel. And I, I don't think there's been an adequate assessment of how proposed GIZ provisions would actually address our concerns, to mitigate, remedy, or avoid those adverse effects on the surrounding environment. I don't know if you've got my statement?
Yes, yes, we do.
That's linked. Oh, yeah, I'll open up the link.
So may I please just run through some key points? I won't repeat stuff that Mr. Sandel has spoken about, but I'm, my statement is sort of trying to find some solutions to propose GIZ rules. So more than everyone, I'm Lucia McKinnon, and I live right opposite 85 Battery Road. So just touching on the present proposal, it looks like it's not going to go ahead as per the reply report from Streaming Six. I do want to note that in the Section 42A report for GIZ, I think it was paragraph, maybe 200, suggests that the intent of my submission has been addressed within a present approach within the rezoning hearing. And I'd just like to say that that has not occurred. So that's an incorrect statement. I know it's probably a time issue. I just want to highlight that. We found that the present proposal could have some merits, and we mentioned that at Stream Six. And we heard from the fuel companies about concerns about the present rules applying to the fuel companies, and there was concerns about that. So the figure one there that you can see is the possibility could have been to re-shrink the present proposal, which you can see the present proposal, which you can see originally it was green line, and my suggestion is to bound it by a blue line, sort of to provide that buffer with the residential neighbours to try and address some of the effects that we've been talking about, particularly through Stream Six. So looking at some specific GIZ rules, so page two there, as I said, I don't think there's been adequate assessment to address whether the rules are going to provide for residential amenity. So if the present proposal is no longer, I think there needs to be some further refinement of some of the GIZ rules, some more of a bouts and braces approach, because noise limits on their own and things like that don't actually address our concerns. So I've picked out two rules to highlight where I think my main concerns are. So GIZ rule seven, transport depots, and GIZ rule six, storage of shipping containers. So with respect to the transport depots, activity status is discretionary, but I'd like to note in the operative plan that service stations and transport depots are discretionary anyway. So we kind of already have that in place at this point in time. In Hearing Stream Six, there were some questions about whether there was an enforcement issue with some of the current operative rules, and I just wanted to highlight our experience of the transport depot. So council attempted in 2023 to enforce the current rule 58.27, but this was challenged, I understand, by lawyers and potentially planners. The logging trucks weren't considered to be in the definition of a transport depot. And within the current operative plan, transport depot, you can see in the footnote there, that includes a carrier's depot and truck stop. So one would assume that the logging trucks would have fallen into that, but it doesn't. So I consider rule 7A, that it won't effectively address the concerns with parking and idling of heavy trucks, particularly during the early hours of the morning. So I'm not a planner, but I'm just trying to find solutions and putting them forward for further discussion, is maybe we need a new GIZ rule for parking of heavy vehicles. And I understand heavy vehicles park on the railway land and the fuel company land, and there's no issues with those types of trucks, as Ms. McPherson from Stream Six said, that those trucks are modern, well insulated and they're quiet, whereas when you've got logging trucks, got different ages and some are very, very, very loud, they have to idle for a very, very, very long time. So there's that idea on that table, permitted on the railway land and railway network, whereas it's discretionary on the land that doesn't contain those activities. And I think that provides that bouts and braces, checks and balances approach, and allows conditions to be imposed on the resource consent, have things like noise management plans and other management plans to help manage those effects. So that's just an idea there. Moving on to storage of shipping containers, rule 6A. I note, I think the Napier Port was talking about the hours of operation between 8am and 10pm and whether that should be an appropriate rule. And also, I just note that there's also other standards that sort of help to manage the storage of containers, be it setbacks, maximum height and the height recession plane thing. So when you compare the proposed storage of container rules under GIZ and with what we've currently got, yep, the setback has increased from three metres to six metres, and also the height has increased significantly from 10 to 24, which is, we've expressed concerns previously about that. I don't think the operating hours for particularly for 85 Battery Road is particularly restrictive, I mean, 8am to 10pm, and I believe that further constraints are needed for weekend activity, particularly Sunday, but then that can inadvertently impact the railway network because containers move all the time there. And I see on that left-hand side of the picture, that shows the visual dominance of the containers when we experienced it with NZL. Just to say about enforcement of the current operative rules, there was considerable resource put by council to enforce setbacks and the noise limits, and there was so many challenges with that. We set up a group with NZL residents group, we had a facilitator, we developed noise management plans, other plans, we met regulators trying to address the NZL issues, we met the councillors, mayors, senior leaders of council to try and find solutions, and at the end of the day, council helped facilitate the movement of NZL to the Pandora industrial zone. And even the CEO of NZL acknowledged that it was not appropriate to have containers on that site with it, but he was operating, mainly within the rules, apart from some impairment notices, which they challenged through their lawyers, and were successful. So given this, I think the storage of containers should be discretionary to provide those bouts and braces, checks and balances, but I know it's really challenging because on the GIZ site, and our Hariri is quite large, so there's the four bullet points there. I thought, you know, there could be exceptions to the discretionary rule if the containers don't exceed three metres, and I just note from Hearing Stream Four, on the mixed-use zone, that it's recommended that the three metre should be retained for the mixed use, which was going to be part of what that 85 Battery Road was going to be. You know, you could specify a number of containers that could be on the site, you could say if they're for acoustic management purposes, that's okay, and no worries with containers being on the railway network. So just some ideas to ponder for the panel. I really would like to continue to engage and actually find some solutions, and I think we could get there. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon, for a very constructive statement there. I'll open it up to questions from the panel, Mr. Prosser.
Yeah, look, I think you've been really clear, it's an interesting interface there, and yeah, you've covered off the character and the design outcomes that you're looking for in the industrial interfaces, rule framework. So yeah, I think I'm happy with your written evidence, thank you, I don't have any specific follow-up questions.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Van Voorthuisen.
No, no questions from me either, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, and I don't have any further questions, so thank you very much for your attendance today and for your statements, it's been very useful, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We are due to wrap up the hearing shortly, but I am aware that we haven't heard from Ms. Lincoln around the FENS provisions, so there has been quite a bit of movement in terms of addressing this district-wide concern, the topic. So, Ms. Lincoln, would you like to talk to your statement and give us a precis of where we're all at at the moment?
Certainly. So yes, as you've mentioned, FENS Fire and Emergency New Zealand made a number of submission points across the district plan in every zone, as well as, I think Papa Kainga was an additional district-wide chapter, and specifically relating to water supply for firefighting purposes. What the relief that they sought, the recommendation from the officers was kind of variable as we went through the hearing process, and it was agreed that that was not the best approach, and that we should look at what their relief sought is in a much more comprehensive fashion. And so we've been working with FENS on the relief, the wording of the relief sought, which we felt was not appropriate and would have triggered the need for a number of consents in situations where it would have been inefficient process for to do that. So most recently, FENS have provided us with some amended wording, which would be inserted as a standard in all the zones. And so that wording, we've looked at whether that is appropriate, and along with the standard would be the matter of discretion, I won't go into it in detail because you have it in front of you, but essentially, we were comfortable with the wording that was put forward by them, and so our recommendation is across those zones, as well as Papa Kainga that they've submitted on, is to insert the wording that we've agreed to. They've also sought some changes to the subdivision chapter, but we felt that the recommendation of the reporting officer was sufficient to address the concerns of FENS for that particular matter. So yeah, so when we write up the, you know, help with the panel's recommendation to the chapters, our recommendation is to make those changes throughout those chapters.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question, given that this is a district-wide issue, rather than make all the changes verbatim in all the various zones and things, had some thought been given to addressing it as a district-wide matter, just elevating it to something under hazards and risks, because it is a hazard, clearly, in that way sort of covering the whole issue across the district, across the city, without having to go through all the standards and rules for every zone and thing?
Yeah, you've raised a really good point, it's not something that I have considered. I think I would need to look at that in a little bit more detail to see whether that would be a workable solution.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's just a thought. The other question too is, so FENS are entirely comfortable with where you are?
Yes, I've provided them with a copy of my memo in advance of this hearing, and they've responded saying that they are happy with my response.
And you're fairly comfortable that the standard and things works across all the different types of zones, from open space and?
Yes, I think there will potentially be some duplication whereby if a resource consent is already triggered and the code of practice is applied, which requires the water supply for firefighting purposes anyway to that standard, but this, I guess, having it in the district plan, as opposed to a separate document in the code of practice alleviates those concerns about whether the code of practice has that same kind of regulatory status. So yes, I was comfortable with that. Particularly, I followed up with FENS with a question relating to, would this new standard trigger the need to have firefighting water supply in rural areas when you put likes of a shed or something on the property? And their response was that the standard was very clear that it related to the largest building on the site, so if there is an existing dwelling on the property, then the firefighting water supply needs would be met by that large dwelling.
Right, so it's the amount of water you have available to fight the largest possible fire?
Correct.
On the site?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the panel?
Yeah, I guess I was trying to understand that same, and that's helpful detail. I guess my question for you was sort of, have we considered whether the amended wording could impose that sort of disproportionate cost or constraints on smaller developments, particularly in areas with older infrastructure, or whether or not there was a consenting pathway? You know, for example, through a controlled activity for exemptions if that was required, but I guess it comes down to whether or not we think there are areas of infrastructure where that would be relevant in the city.
Yeah, so when we looked at this, we looked at where the gaps were, where the firefighting water supply services was not already provided for through other means, and the code of practice has a requirement that council's reticulated water network does meet the firefighting standard, and so within areas that are already reticulated with water supply, there is that requirement for that level of service. Also, the triggering of a subdivision consent, so whenever a new lot is created, again, the code of practice requires that water supply for firefighting needs is met. So it was really just looking at in unserviced areas, where you have an existing lot, that perhaps they might want to put a new dwelling on it, that would be where that gap is. And so if you were building a dwelling, then it's reasonable to expect that there's firefighting water services that need to be provided to that site.
Yeah, so in a scenario where someone's off-grid essentially, so away from council services, there would be a requirement to have a certain literage of available water or access to a bore that tested at a certain rate or?
Correct, that's right, yeah.
And that would comply with the standard.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. So that's a requirement when the new lot is created anyway, it's just if you have an existing lot that doesn't have, say, for example, a consent notice on the title requiring that, this would be the closing of the gap.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful.
Commissioner Van Voorthuisen?
No, that's all very good. Look, just to be crystal clear, so the wording underneath your paragraph eight, that's now totally agreed between yourself and FENS?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's very similar to wording I'm familiar with in other district plans, so thank you for that. And I just refer back to an earlier memo that FENS had written in terms of this issue that's just been discussed about isolated buildings or buildings that aren't part of the, you know, in an area that's in a reticulated part of the system, even they can catch on fire, and quite often do. So I mean, this needs to be a universal, a universal standard regardless of location, so I'm satisfied with the approach, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. In my mind, I'm just trying to think how to wrap this up, and I'm wondering whether it should be a sort of a reply report for the final sort of wrap-up stage of the hearing process?
Certainly.
Just to round it all off and maybe give some consideration to whether it be a district-wide issue, matter or not. There may be lots of complications in following that approach that I haven't thought of. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and there also might be scope issues too in terms of elevating it to a district-wide approach.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So thank you. We've drawn a conclusion to the hearing for Hearing Stream Seven, so thank you all the reporting officers and others, and to all the submitters who presented evidence and statements, thank you very much. We will conclude the hearing now, so thank you. Yes.